Actually, I was listening to the wind, rather. The wind blew just kind of how, you know, creates some echoing noise in there. Yeah, it was pretty, kind of nice.
I wanted to mention to you that we're going to start designing traffic signals for plantations. We did an analysis of warranty traffic signals. We're going to start planning processes. We're probably going to add that on. The challenge is, we've got the need, but of course, we don't have to. But I just wanted you to hear that from me before you heard it from anybody else.
Hell, yeah. You know, I also tell people that's how long I remember. I think I did one ear. I laughed, and goes down the other ear, and I forgot. Kevin told me the same thing. It was within a day or two, and I'll be able to get it from you.
It sounded like you were talking about what you had.
I looked like I was even thought I was.
There's so many tabs. We're really good at filling that. We're really good. We're worried about hearing. We're thinking that should go over well with employees. Right. Everything good. Yeah, not bad. We could do something else. Much like saying before we get started, it is obviously getting close to hurricane season. So on Thursday evening at seven o'clock, we will be testing all of the telephone numbers that we have in our automated dial system for city employees. So if you get that call, number one, it means you actually recognize that we're city employees. Number two, all we're doing is verifying that we have the right telephone number. This is not for the citizens at large, this is just for city citizens. They're supposed to be on a, they're one of those lines. It's a different city. We're going to, we're going to. Okay. We'll go ahead and call this workshop, the City, Jacksonville City Council, to order. And we have a proposed agenda for tonight's meeting, and I will entertain a motion to adopt this agenda.
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed. All right, so we got one topic on here, and this is a budget review for this evening. And I will now turn it over to Dr. Woodruff to start the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, Members of the Council. As we continue with our budget deliberations this evening, we want to focus on water and sewer rates. Also ask you to confirm the, your feeling regarding the upcoming capital improvement program and some changes that I'm recommending to it. And if time permits, also ask you to confirm the department issues that I reviewed you last week. Already in this schedule, we have met on a number of occasions, and an important decision was made two meetings ago, and that was relative to the health insurance premiums. Six percent increase will occur to all of the plans. The employees have been so notified. An open enrollment will begin very shortly, the last part of this month and into early June. Tonight, what we'd like to do is begin to talk about the rate models. The water and sewer rates are based upon a very complicated calculation model, and we've asked the Finance Department to review with you the components. And we're also going to show you real data about what we're, what the options are for moving forward with potential rate increases beginning this year. So Alan will review these. Gail is also here, back there, as we move through. So Alan, please.
Okay, Mayor and Council, glad to be here this evening. So we will begin working, talking about our water and sewer rate model. Just to remind you that the rate model components are made up of these, mainly these four things. Assumptions, which include our fund balances, where at the level we would like our fund balance to be at, our interest rates for long-term borrowing, and any escalation factors that we may enter into the rate model. We have entered in our actuals from prior years and our budget for FY19 as it stands now. We have our capital improvement plan entered in, as it will be presented to you this evening. And then all of our existing debt is entered into the rate model, and then the rate model will calculate any debt that may be needed going forward.
Now, here's the part that I'd like to ask you to, this is kind of like the game show on TV. You have roughly 13,000 residential customers in the city. So I'd like for you to take your pencil, and nobody, you know, speak out, even though I'm sure Mr. Bittner's going to know the answer to these, but write down what you think the answer is. What percent of all city residential customers use 6,000 gallons or less per month? 6,000 gallons or less per month. Is it 66.6? Is it 77.1? Or is it 90.3? So please, write down your answer. Okay, before we give you the correct answer, let's go to the next question. The next question is, what percent of all your residential customers use 2,500 gallons or less? Is it 19.6%? 33.9%? 45.7%? What percent use less than 2,500 gallons per month? I can't come up with any other music, so I have to do this one without the music this time. Everybody have their answers down? Now, before we show you the correct answers, Mr. Bittner, would you like to take a stab at the first, move back one? Like to take a stab at the first answer here?
Put me on the spot, huh?
Yes, sir.
A.
A, 66.23. Mr. Lozera?
I said C.
C. Mr. Thomas?
C.
Let's see what the, well, no, that would show the-
Is that Spanish for yes?
Yeah, we are talking about water, and so I guess we are talking about AquaPura.
He is, no question about that.
Well, let's go to the next question. Mr. Jackson, you got an opinion on this one?
Why didn't you ask me about the last one? Uh, let's just, uh, B, whatever.
You're going to go with B. Ms. Washington?
I went with B, kid, you're not.
Mr. NC State himself?
I went with B.
B. All right, let's show you what the real answers are. 90.3% of all city customers use 6,000 gallons or less. And 45.7% of our residential customers use 2,500 gallons or less. Now, I have to tell you, you know, we bathe at least once a week, whether we need to or not. We are not in that 45% category. I have no idea whether you are or aren't. But I have to tell you, as the manager, I was shocked to realize that almost half of our customers use 2,500 gallons or less. It's amazing. Now, commercial customers use a lot more, depending whether they're a restaurant, or, or, or. But I thought these were important facts for you to think about as we look at the rate options. So with that, I'll turn it back to Finance.
All right, so I'll go over four different rate options that we have, as a staff, have looked at. And then we will look at different bills for different levels of usage, 2,500 gallons being one of those, and 6,000 gallons being another one. So the first option we want to look at is what we call just-in-time rates. That is, the rate model calculating rates as needed, based on the information that we've entered in there. So to kind of refresh your memories, this is the panel that we look at. The top three sections where it says water rate plan, sewer rate plan, and combined rate plan shows the rates that the model is calculating. The blue line is the current rate that we will run, and the green line is the last rate that was run. So the green line is going to stay stagnant in all the options that we look at. That's what we're going to compare all of our options to, is the baseline, as if the model is calculating it, the just-in-time rates. You can see where it's looking at the senior debt service coverage and the all debt service coverage, where we're meeting those coverage ratios. And then down at the bottom, it has the average water and sewer bill based on 6,000 gallons. And then we've also calculated a minimum bill for each year going out. One of the pros that we felt in this model was that there's no increases in the first two years. You'll see that there's, in FY19 and '20, there's no increase. But one of the cons that we felt that there's, back down in the later years, in '26, '27, and '28, we start having larger increases in order to maintain our debt service coverage and our fund balance.
Now, before you leave this, these are real numbers based upon your capital improvement program, as has been submitted to you. That includes several of your big projects. It includes what I call the Northwest Passage. It includes the Bryn Mawr. It includes all of the projects that you see in there, not just for FY19, but for each of the years that, that the CIP covers. When I first looked at this, I was a little confused, because if you look at the first line, it says water rate plan, then it says sewer rate plan and combined rate plan. Although the numbers, if you look at FY21, you'll see on the water rate, it says 3.67, sewer 3.67, and combined 3.67. When I first looked at that, I thought you were supposed to add water and sewer. No, or however they work the model. What we're really saying is, if you go with the just-in-time rates, what it says is that in FY21, you will raise the total rate, the combined rate, by 3.67%. Option one says that for FY19 and FY20, there is no rate increase, although you'll be moving forward with your capital improvement program. Look down at the very bottom, where it says average W and S bill of 6,000 gallons. What you'll notice is, for FY18, our current year, if you use 6,000 gallons, your bill is $80.60. Under this plan, in FY19, it would stay $80.60. In '20, $80.60. And in '21, it would go up to $83.56. What we'd like for you to do, though, go back to the combined rate line and follow out the additional years. What you'll see is that in the year '27, you face a significant rate increase. Now, you might look at that and say, hey, in, you know, '20, '27, I'm going to be, you know, I'll have one delato, I'll have my own pizza chain, and I won't have to worry about that. But the, when I look at this, the pro of this is no rate increase this year. The negative of this is your capital improvement plan is backloading the rate increases, 14.5%. And look down at the very bottom line again, where it says 6,000 gallons. That rate is $108.63 compared to today's rate of $80.60. So that's like a $20, $28 increase a month. So if you look, and let me just go up and look. Look at this line right here. You'll see '27, you're talking about a 14.5% increase, and your rate is going to be $108 versus the current rate of 80.60. Okay? Now, that's option one. I know Glenn didn't like for me to leave the microphone, but hopefully that helped. Go ahead with option one.
All right. So in option one, we saw the 6,000 gallon usage bills. We've also have bills for 2,500 gallons usage, 3,000 and 3,500. So you can see those progress through time and how they increase year to year, based on the just-in-time rates. And then this is a chart that we looked at before that shows how our fund balance will be spent. So we start out in '18 at a high level, and then we start spending down. And then years '26, '27, and '28, fiscal years '26, '27, and '28, we come to our target, which we, Council said they would like that to be around $10 million. So that's where we set our target line at, and that's where we're at with the just-in-time rates.
And remember, the target is the amount that's going to stay in the water and sewer fund reserve, so that if we have some major negative event, we have real money capable of making larger repairs. And of course, in all of these models, you're going to see the same information, because regardless of whether you pick option one, two, three, or four, all of our projects are going to be paid for in cash up the first several years while we spend down, and then there'll be bonds that will pay us back. So please.
Okay. Option two is showing biannual increases for the first five years of the plan, of the 10-year period. This, this option, along with option one, are the two options that were shown to the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee. So here, you've got our 3% rate increase in '19, a 2% rate increase in FY21, and a 2% rate increase in FY23. Our debt service coverage, we're meeting that. You'll see in a few minutes how our fund balance is affected, but the bills down at the bottom, the average water and sewer bill for 6,000 gallons, you can see how that grows. And then the minimum bill as well. One of the pros we felt here was you're not having an increase every year. It's an every-other-year, and then it begins calculating just-in-time rates in fiscal year '24. But if you look out into FY28, you'll see that there is a 12.3% increase back on top of a five, almost 6% increase in FY27. So here are samples of those same gallon usage here, using the, that scenario of every-other-year rate increases.
Go back to that just a second. You know, again, you can see every other year, it would go from the current bill for the 2,500 gallon user from $53.89. It would go up, you know-
3%.
3%. I was going to say roughly $1.61, but Gail doesn't let me do math in public. And then you can see, as you move out every other year, every other year. And then you can go down the chart for 3,000, 3,500, and 6,000 gallons.
And then here's the same fund balance chart, showing how we will spend down our fund balance, the blue line being the current plan. And you'll see that in FY27, we hit our target, and then the rates are calculated to help us maintain that target level. The third option that we looked at, based on a comment or a suggestion from the Water and Sewer Committee, was to, the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee, was to try to get your rates where they're level, but they're not more than 5% a year. So we started at this point here, where we started with 1% increases for the first five years, and then let the model do just-in-time rate increases in the last five years of the 10-year period. So you can see the rate increases going across for the first five years at 1%. We increase rates in FY27 at 12.8%. The two yellow highlighted areas show that, it's like a warning, it shows where we're starting to approach our debt service coverage. So, and then the two years after that, you can see that we rebound back up to 1.25. But that's what the model will do. It kind of will signal us with an alarm that we're approaching some target level there.
What is that target level?
We have it set right now at 1.25 in the model. The average water and sewer bills across the bottom for 6,000 gallons, you can see how they increase, based on the rate increases, and then the minimum bills as well. And again, the same level of consumption here, we're looking at the 1% in the first five years. And then you can see how we spend down our fund balance here, a little bit steady in the first five years, and then in FY26, we hit that target, and the just-in-time rates start calculating to make sure we meet that level there. And so the last option that we're, would like to look at is, you know, based on what the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee said, we played with some different options, and this is a 2.25% annual increase. It's the minimum level that we could come to, to meet our debt service requirements and our fund balance, and then maintain a level rate increase, as suggested by the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee, below 5%. So you can see here that we maintain the 2.25% level throughout the 10-year period, compared to the green line, which was our just-in-time rates. Our debt service coverage, we're meeting all of those different coverages. And then our different water and sewer bills for 6,000 gallons across the bottom, and the minimum bill on the bottom as well. What I was going to point out was that in the, one of the pros here was, you know, in the last two years, the steady increases, your, your average bill for 6,000 gallons, and for the others, you'll see, is a lot less than what the just-in-time rate is.
Levels it out.
That's right. So in FY27, you're about $10 less on 6,000 gallons, and in FY28, you're about $12 less per month on the 6,000 gallons. So here is the, those same consumption-usage rates there, showing the bills for those levels. And then this is how our fund balance would pay out, where you see it's a slower decrease. We don't actually get to that target level until FY28. And I don't know if you can see it on the screen up there, but we're actually a little bit above that target still, under this scenario here.
May I have that?
Sure.
When you go back, and I'm going to go back through all of the options very quickly.
Before you do, can I ask a quick question?
Please.
In any of the options that you're presenting to us, whichever option we may go with, that's not going to, in turn, guarantee that there may not be a, a change in the future of a rate model. Is that correct?
What you're, what you're looking at is a, what I'll call a realistic exercise for FY19, a theoretic exercise from that point.
Right.
We know that we do not adopt multi-year budgets. We also know that what Council does tonight, or at any point, does not tie the hands of a future Council. So for example, you could adopt this option one tonight, and next year, even though it says for FY20, no rate increase, you could say, you know, I think we made a mistake last year, let's go with 5% or 3% or any number you want. So you're exactly correct. All of these are for decision-making for the fiscal year '19 budget, but also thought as to what you're, what, what concept are you using for the future?
Based on capital projects?
Capital projects. And one of the good things that the state law change required us to do, up to this point, we've been in a five-year capital improvement plan. While we've had master plans that have said, yes, you need to do this or do that some time in the future, it was never put in your capital improvement program. The capital improvement program now is, as you can see, you know, on the, on the title, well, not on that title, it's actually a 10-year capital improvement program with certain elements longer. Is that correct, Wally?
That's correct.
Okay. What I'd like for you to focus on is the years FY26 and '27 and '28, when you look at each of the models. You look at Model 1, or Option 1, and say, hey, that's an easy decision, we're not raising rates. What you'll look at, though, and look at the third line down, the combined rate plan, you will see that you are going to be looking at rate increases almost every year, '21, '22, '23, '24, '25. And in '25, they begin to get fairly large, over 5%. And in '27 and '28, you know, once again, pretty, pretty hefty rate. Look at the next option two. Every other year. You have, you know, reasonable rate increases every other year, and then in FY28, it's a pretty substantial increase. FY27, pretty substantial, too. I would say to you, one of the real advantages of this is it is every other year, and you'll notice it's 3%, nothing, 3%, uh, 3%, let's start that again. FY19 is 3%, then no increase. FY21 is 2%, no increase. FY23, 2%. And then the just-in-time begins to kick in. Go to option three one more time. 1% across the board. You'll notice for the next five years, in theory, you're saying 1% a year, but when you get out there in '27, it's a pretty hefty increase. And then if you did the 2.5 or 2.25% annually, you'll notice it's just 2.25, 2.25, 2.25.
What growth factor have you put into the budget?
When you say growth factor, you mean inflation factor on projects? Wally, can you come up? Because you and Gail need to join the discussion.
I'll let Gail nod.
Okay.
So it depends for the different elements. I think one thing I should point out first is, it's not just the capital improvement plan that the rate model takes into consideration. The reason you see FY18 up there is because our full-year estimate is loaded into the rate model, and then it builds off of that for our operating budget. So, for example, electricity was fairly modest. I think it was just over 1% for inflational electricity. Some of the items we had upwards around 3%. So it depended on the different elements. StanTech developed this for us, so they kind of gave us some input based on what they see industry-wide. So I, there's not just a standard, the operating budget's built on 3%. The capital improvement plan is built on 5%. So it kind of varies.
What about on the revenue side? Are we looking at, when those are projected out, are we, when this is developed, was it based on current amount of users now? Are we looking at any growth in revenues through added rate payers? Is that included in the model?
It is. We added 100 accounts a year, I believe. And then, but one thing we did take into consideration is, industry-wide, there is, it actually shows there is less demand. So there's conservation, or people using less water. So it actually takes that into consideration also. So your demand, while, while we increase the accounts, the demand may go down slightly.
I think that's shown by the, by the amazing statistic that, you know, over almost half of your customers, or our customers, use less than 2,500 gallons. I mean, I would tell you that 20 years ago, I don't think that would have been the model. I think you would have had maybe 10% using that little amount of water, especially in a community that's as young as we are. But again, let's verify, when it comes to rate customers, we have to assume, because we don't have annexation anymore, and because of the reality of subdivisions not being built inside the city, we have to take into consideration modest residential growth. Our commercial growth is-
StanTech developed this for us, so they kind of gave us some input based on what they see industry-wide. So I, there's not just a standard operating budget's built on 3%. The capital improvement plan is built on 5%. So it kind of varies.
But now. What about on the revenue side? Are we looking at, when those are projected out, are we, when this is developed, was it based on current amount of users now? Are we looking at any growth in revenues through added rate payers? Is that included in the model?
It is. We added 100 accounts a year, I believe.
Okay.
And then, but one thing we did take into consideration is, industry-wide, there is, it actually shows there is less demand. So there's conservation or people using less water. So it actually takes that into consideration also. So your demand, while, while we increase the accounts, the demand may go down slightly.
And I think that's shown by the, by the amazing statistic that, you know, over almost half of your customers or our customers use less than 2,500 gallons. I mean, I would tell you that 20 years ago, I don't think that would have been the model. I think you would have had maybe 10% using that little amount of water, especially in a community that's as young as we are. But again, let's verify, when it comes to rate customers, we have to assume, because we don't have annexation anymore, and because of the reality of subdivisions not being built inside the city, we have to take into consideration modest residential growth. Our commercial growth is where I believe the tax base is going to be built over the next five to 10 years.
We obviously looked at this at the Water and Sewer, right, last meeting and everything, and so I've had a chance to see it before and think about it as well. And I think that's kind of the rub for me is, we're, which is, I mean, I think a good idea to be conservative on your estimates of growth, because really what you're talking about is only a 5%, 5.5% growth in 10 years in your customer base. And if that's really your expectations, then I'm not sure our capital improvement plan is appropriate. If we're, because it seems like our plan is more geared to more growth than that. Maybe I'm mistaken, but it seems like all these projects are to provide additional capabilities. In other words, we could be building the store too big. If, if you're going to expand your system and you're only going to have 105% of the people to, of course you're going to have to have rate increases. If you've got a more expensive system with essentially the same number of people paying for it, that's where I think there's a, some analysis needs to be done. You know, what, what is the growth factor that we're building for? And then what is the growth factor we're really expecting?
And that strikes me with another question. Does this incorporate your, your revenues from your commercial customers or just strictly residential?
No, it incorporates.
So it's a, it's an all-encompassing rate structure.
Yeah. You know, one of the things that, that we have the dilemma on, you will look back, and I wasn't here, I'm just going to say 10 years ago, and we were in a situation where we did not have the capacity, and we had a subdivision come in right next to Carolina Forest, Ramsey Road, and they wanted sewer and we couldn't give it to them. The problem is, you don't build these things, and Mr. Thomas is right, this is not inexpensive. Everything we touch in water and sewer is expensive. You will recall that in the recent storm, we had one of the automatic switches that was supposed to go from, you know, commercial electric over to.
The generator. The switch, you know, froze. It got welded. The switch alone is $61,000. That's not, that doesn't include all the electrical wiring that has to go with the switch and all the labor to install it. We're probably looking at $150,000 to make that one component change.
As your manager, I don't disagree with Mr. Thomas. But where my concern is, if you don't build it and someone wants it, are they going to do to you the same thing that the developer of that subdivision did? And suddenly, you know, it's too late. You don't build these things in 30 days. It's multi-years. That Northwest Passage is at least a five-year construction project. And again, as you know, from what Greg has shown you, whether you build the Northwest Passage for that growth, or whether you do your internal improvements through your lift stations and upsizing of lines, neither is that different in expense. Now, what we have done in these rate models is we have pushed the Northwest Passage project back several years because of the point that you're making. And that's why I want to stress again, every year, you're going to look at this model. And so hopefully, you know, this time next year, and let me go back a second, you'll recall that recently I said to y'all in a meeting that we have suddenly had a person who is buying one of the undeveloped phases in Williamsburg, and the D.R. Horton is back on the, on the path to build Cypress, Cypress Creek. Well, that's potentially 500 residential units. And they're not going to be built in one week. Most likely, the consumption model will be for 500 units in this community somewhere between five and seven years. So by moving forward with whichever, even if it's Option One, by moving forward with the rate analysis and having it on your plate every year, you're going to be able to give us better direction as to, okay, did the rate that, did the, did the projected growth occur? Or, nope, we didn't have anything happen again this year, so maybe the model can shift one more year. All of this is, is art. This is not science. There's a lot of math involved in it, but it's strictly the art of how do you manage your rates and your system.
And the CIP isn't fully directed towards growth. I mean, you have a lot of replacement rehabilitations and necessary projects. You keep the system where it needs to be.
I'll give you one necessary project that you're seeing. You saw the lagoon level email that Wally sent me this morning. Bryn Mawr, when, when Wally was first talking to me about diverting a million gallons to Bryn Mawr, from Bryn Mawr out to the base, I thought, well, you know, that's a, that's a pretty nice project, maybe someday we can do it. The more I look at the lagoon levels, the more I'm thinking the most important project in your CIP is getting that million gallons on the base. Because we're, you know, once again, at emergency spraying. Everybody has an opinion on these things. The, whatever you do, whatever you decide to do on rates, we can run any model, you know, if you wanted to see a 4%, if you wanted to see a 1.7%, whatever you want to look at. I think the important thing, we, Mr., I've learned a lot of things from each of you. One of the things I've learned from Mr. Thomas is to look through the pocketbook.
True.
These are the numbers that talk to me. These are the numbers that talk to me. I'll be honest with you, Gwen pays all our bills, so I have no clue where I fall on that scale. I, I mean, seriously, I have no clue. I do know, though, I love showers. So I'm going to assume that I'm in the 6,000 gallon range. Maybe I'm not. What does that really mean to me in real money? Now, I recognize I am much more blessed than most people in this community. I'll admit that. Even if you do 2.25% every year, what does it mean to me? It means that at 6,000 gallons, it's costing me, I'm just going to say, $2 more a year, uh, $2 more a month. That's $24 more a year. But I always, I'm just amazed every time I see a Verizon commercial that says, we can give you four lines a month with unlimited data, and the cost is $100 a month. Folks, they, citizens don't pay $1,200 a year for their full tax bill to the city. Not most citizens. Maybe some do. All I'm asking you to do is, you're going to have to think through your pocketbook. What are you the most comfortable with? We can show you percentages all day long. The real numbers you need to look at is these, these numbers on what's the real money coming out of your pocketbook and your citizens' pocketbooks.
Does the two, does any increased figure apply to the minimum?
It's 2,000 gallons.
Yes. If you go back one, you'll see on the, on the very bottom in the blue, you see that increasing.
Oh, the minimum. Right.
What did the?
So the minimum is, the minimum and the rate, the water rate, both go up, is that right?
I don't, I don't think we've actually split it.
We haven't. This is just holistically.
This is a gross amount. We can allocate it between base rate and gallons. I mean.
Yeah. What you're seeing there is at the, right now, the minimum bill is $50.07. It would go to $51.20 with the 2.25. The whole scale moves for each of these.
So you actually couldn't apply this, this, because some of it would apply to the minimum and apply to the usage factor. So you would really have.
It can. You'd have to, you'd have to, you'd have to play with them. And you'd have to go back into the settings.
Right.
And, and put some different figures in.
Where you're, you know, you got two.
We did the volume.
Factors.
Yep.
That make up the bill, the base and the usage factor.
Well, for what it's worth, the Onwasa budget, which is just about put to bed, carries with it a 7% increase for the next budget. And over the next four years, much smaller increases, what, 2%, 3%?
It was 2.6%.
Yeah.
Mr.? Mr. Lozare, I think you were getting ready to ask a question before I interrupted you a minute ago. I thought you were going to ask, what did the, and I'm assuming you were going to say.
I was asking, what was the recommendation from the?
Water Sewer.
Water Sewer.
Wally, what was there?
Their, the Water Sewer recommendation was that they would like to recommend to council that you do something small now, and they made, they didn't give a percentage. They just, but there were, there was subsequent discussion, and the discussion concluded with, we'd like to see what you could do to avoid large rate increases over 5%. But there was no, it, there was not a specific percentage or scenario. We only presented the two scenarios to Water and Sewer, but their, their comments were, and their recommendation was, that we, we would prefer to see you as a citizen board do something small now and try to push those larger rate increases out further. And, I mean, I was here when we did the large rate increases with the plants, and it was not pleasant. I mean, and I know it wasn't pleasant for many of you.
Well, you're talking about looking through the pocketbook. I, as a consumer, would much rather pay in small increments than I would having, you know, in two, in '28, getting pop for, you know, the increase that we would be looking at if we went with that plan.
And as you said earlier, I think it's important to note that, you know, we have a system to keep up, and, and we constantly have maintenance issues, replacements, and, you know, we can't let the system go.
I'd like to think that we would have another rate study within sometime in that 10 years, that we would have to look at things again.
Re-look at.
I mean, this is not.
Now, I got the option for ability, the ability to do that.
Yeah. Just as the last model, we had the opportunity to, to manipulate it each year. The new model, which StanTech has given us, obviously every model is better than the last model. Not anything wrong with the last model, it just didn't have all the bells and whistles that computer science can give us today. So our personnel have been trained, our personnel is this person, that person, that person over there, and this person back here, certainly not this person. Okay. But that's the thing. Every year, we will run this model. Every year. Now, one of the nice things about being the city manager is, part of my responsibility is to give you advice. And one of the nice things about being elected official is you don't have to take my advice. But this is what I'm going to recommend to you. This. It's never pleasant to raise rates, but what this does is it avoids, you know, I will be retired and, you know, living somewhere on a golf course or water skiing every day or dead, one or the other, when 2027 comes.
Rosie scenario.
A rosy scenario. By the way, you don't get a water and sewer bill if you're up there or down there. But the point is, somebody is going to sit in all of these chairs, and in 2027, you're not going to be facing a 12 or 15 or 17% increase. This is my recommendation. What I'd like to ask you to do, though, you haven't seen this now except for 30 minutes. We want to ship all this to you and have you study it, look at all the numbers. And if you come up in the next week, because remember, next Tuesday night, we don't have a meeting, but the next meeting is going to be June the 5th. But over the next week, study all of these options. Send us emails asking questions for clarification. Or if you want an Option Five or an Option Seven, you know, ask us to run that, because the model is now here, our folks can operate it, and we can give you any data that you want.
Could you explain why you pushed off the one project or redundancy project?
Well.
Go ahead.
Sure. We, we slid Parkwood out another year based on the information we had from the latest run of the sewer model. We have a, the sewer model was calibrated and rerun, as Greg was giving you the wastewater updates. And what we found was that we can actually get, we have slightly more capacity in our existing system to where we could take portions of Williamsburg plantation as it continues to develop, or Cypress Creek as it continues to develop. Our previous model basically said we had the equivalent of, and I don't remember the exact number, around 300 homes. And we found that we do have more than that. So what, we're trying to be realistic. We realize that, you know, that large of a project does have an impact. So we did slide that. We also looked at the bidding climate, and right now, the bidding climate is not great. So having the capability to slide the project and looking at the bidding climate, it made sense to slide the project a little bit.
Thank you. Any other questions or directions on this? Okay. We'll move real quickly to the capital improvement plan. Normally, this young lady is in college classes on Tuesday night. She specifically arranged her schedule that way, so we couldn't ask her. I'll also turn it over to you to give an overview of the CIP.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. So before we get started, I just wanted to remind everybody, for FY '19, we've got, as you can see, a fair number of projects by department, and with the majority, as always, in public services. And so we're going to talk about some of the changes that we've talked about as a result of the model that finance has been working on. And so these two projects, we actually just moved the funding. And so these are errors on our part, that these projects either were previously already adopted and they already had money, or that the project hasn't received the money and we just showed it in the wrong year. So we just made those, those respective changes. And then these are the projects that we actually focused on in looking at, how does it impact the rate model? And so as staff, we decided we needed to make some adjustments. So the first project, the U-5319, that actually got moved up. You might recall that you had previously approved that municipal agreement. And then, as you can see thereafter, we've pushed out some of these projects with the majority being Capital Reserve Fund. And so some of these projects, in more particular, the Northeast Creek Bulkhead and Boardwalk. So this project, as you know, we've already done the, the bulk head portion of the project, but since this project has appeared in the CAFR, the name has to remain the same. And so as we started looking at the development for Northeast Creek Park, we realized that maybe we're being a little short-sighted in putting the boardwalk back just as it currently exists. And so we've decided to go ahead and appropriate $100,000 for next year, and then to split out potential two phases of construction for the boardwalk as, as the design kind of dictates itself. And so our thought was, we'd start engineering that, that whole process next year, and then we can bring back options both at a staff level to present to council.
And before you leave that, let me give you an example. The CIP called for $447,000 in FY '19. Even if you approved it, we couldn't spend $447,000 on this project in one year. It's going to take us a lot of that time to figure out what is it we're going to be able to do, and where do we want to do it? Maybe we wind up putting both boardwalks back exactly as they are today. Maybe what we come back to you and say, because of this, this, and this, we're only going to build one of the boardwalks. So again, instead of handcuffing ourselves by putting in $447,000 on this project in one year, we're breaking it out into phases.
The next project was the transit multimodal facility. And so if you were looking at the project as a whole, you'll, you'll see that as a revenue source is the in-kind match of the land. And so that we're able to leverage that cost of that as an asset and to increase our ability to, to spend FTA or federal money. However, in do, in identifying that as a revenue source, we actually overinflated the potential expenditures. So what we decided was to show council and, and citizens an actual realistic budget. So. So we removed that as a revenue source, and so the project budget that's now presented is actually what we foresee spending on the actual project. So other than that, it hasn't changed. And then the New Bridge Street Infrastructure Project. So you might recall that this project has multiple funding sources. The funding sources, as you can see, range significantly. When the project was initially presented, we kind of made some assumptions as far as who would fund what source, I guess. And so in taking a better look at how we would actually construct this project, we were able to make some adjustments. So the total project, estimated project cost of 1.9 hasn't changed. What did change was the different funding sources, the amounts. So you'll see that the stormwater fund significantly increased, and that's as a result of us having to increase the stormwater pipes. Some of those are actually gonna be doubled in size. So the curb line itself's not gonna change, but so we're gonna be eating away or demolishing some of that sidewalk. And so as a result, we felt that stormwater should pay a little bit more of that cost. Likewise, on the Capital Reserve Fund, that is part of the median improvements, the streetscaping, a little bit of some of the paving work. The power bill went down, we were focusing more on a little bit of the sidewalks and paving. So we kind of just split the project cost out a little bit more. So this project, again, the 1.9 is a total project cost, we are, this is a staff estimate. We have engaged the services of a design firm, and we will be getting opinions of cost throughout, at 30% and 60%. At 60%, we'll be coming back to city council to go over the project as a whole and to look at options of either constructing this as one large project or to split it out into phases. So we'll come back to you at a later date with more information.
And let me give you one example. When we first looked at the project, we knew we were taking up all the curb and gutter and all the sidewalk. In order to put in the storm drains, you gotta dig up, even if you weren't touching the sidewalks, you'd have to dig up the curb and gutter. So in looking at the Capital Reserve, your 4-cent fund, we said, is that really the place that has to pay for the new curb and gutter? Stormwater should actually be paying for the curb and gutter, not your 4-cent reserve. So if you look at it this way, yes, it's a shell game of moving around which fund is paying for what. But what Deanna is showing you is the impacts that it has had on each of the funds. Please.
And so tonight, staff is requesting concurrence with the proposed CIP. Obviously, if you have any other questions or if you need us to look at some further adjustments, we'll be more than happy to do that.
Council questions?
Let me show you one of the reasons why we're moving a couple of the, a couple of the funds around for the Capital Reserve. This is where you do what I'm gonna call quality of life projects. 4 cents generates about $1.4 million annually. Beginning the fund balance based upon what you allocated in this current fiscal year, you left as uncommitted money $490,000, which I think was a good idea. You're gonna add 1.4 million, so available is 1.9 million as you go into this year's budget, the FY19 budget. If you take out the projects that we're recommending and then also take out the debt, what you actually, what you'll actually have at the end of FY19 is a million dollars. Well, obviously, the question is, why do you want to leave something that large? You know, why not do, why not do, why not do? The projects that are in here, Northeast Creek Park, the Commons Playground, Barn Street, the Fiber, Northeast Creek Boardwalk, New Bridge Street, those are the projects that we're recommending for this coming year. And of course, $15,000 for Sturgeon City Boardwalks. We moved Wilson Bay back, $150,000 back a year. And we moved Northeast Creek back, the actual construction, a year. What we're trying to get away from are these large peaks and valleys in expenditures. We're trying to come up with a fairly level number, similar to what we have done with our capital equipment. My goal, which isn't necessarily your goal, is that three years from now, we would actually be sitting with $3 million cash in your capital fund. Build the reserve so several major projects, and that way we reduce debt. One of the things, I know, you know, in our personal lives, we have to borrow money. You're gonna build a house, you're gonna buy a new car, you have to borrow money. When it comes to quality of life, one of my personal goals is to have as little debt on the city as possible. If you're building a water plant, you're gonna have to have debt. But stay away from debt for improving your parks. If you need to put in playgrounds, pay cash for them, if at all possible. I believe that in the next several years, you're gonna face opportunities for quality of life. We've talked for quite a while about building a multipurpose facility. Maybe one of these days, we'll actually have enough TDA money to do that. Or maybe it's gonna take a combination of TDA and city money. But if you build this reserve up to $3 million, you could build it with cash, or maybe you go into debt. Riverwalk Marina Phase 2, just as an example, you gotta, one of these days, decide to do something more than just a waterfront. The Northeast Creek Ball fields and all that large area. And then, of course, streetscape projects, and then there may be land purchases that come along. Now, you know, the finance department says, I've never met a project I wasn't interested in spending money on. That's true. What I'm suggesting, though, is we can put things like the projects that we, especially the playground equipment there at Wilson Bay, we could put it back in, it's not gonna squirrel the deal, as they say. The thing, though, is I'm asking you to think about the philosophy of building your Capital Reserve up with cash over the next two or three years, so that should an opportunity come along, you have money to act. Now, I'll tell you right now, no, I don't know of any land that I wanna purchase. No, I don't know of any big building I think we should be building. But what I do know is this, opportunities normally come along as surprises. They don't come along with a year's notice or three or four years, you know. That's just the philosophy. On the other hand, if you want to take the Wilson Bay project and move it back into this funding year, it's only $150,000. It doesn't squirrel the overall deal. But that's the philosophy that I looked at as we did the capital plan for the coming year. What are your thoughts?
Anytime I cannot spend money, as opposed to spending money, I'll take not spending.
Yeah, I'm a saver. I'd rather, I'd rather pay cash than borrow. I mean, that's just my personal philosophy, if I can. Sounds like a good plan.
Every year, we'll look at this, y'all are not making any long-term commitment. Nobody's gonna look back at the minutes and say, well, you said you were gonna do this. This is just for this budget's decision. But what it will do, let's go back, however many slides we need to go back. What it will wind up with is this number right here, minus $15,000. You will, if the taxes come in the way we're projecting them, then you will wind up at the end of FY19 with a little over a million dollars. Is that right, Gail? Is my math right? She wasn't paying attention, that's okay. She never listens to me, 'cause I always wanna spend money. Okay. But if you're comfortable with this, then this is what we'll, we'll proceed with. We only have one other quick item, whoops, wrong way. Have one other quick item, and then we can take a recess before your meeting tonight. I wanna make sure that we have the right guidance from you, and up to this point, we've only discussed this. Here are the department issues, and I'm gonna walk through them and then come back and discuss them. The advanced EMT, it's proposed $26,500. I'm recommending that. And then a year away in the 20 budget, it'll be a $1,000 stipend. And two years later, another thousand, two years, a year later, another thousand. The active shooter vest, I'm not recommending that. The extrication equipment, I am recommending it. The Georgetown Training Facility, I'm no longer recommending it. I apologize, I forgot to update this, because as you, I think we've reported back to you that the county is not interested in selling Georgetown. And therefore, we're back to what I'll call zero base to figure out what are we gonna do? So that 25,000 doesn't need to be in your budget.
Is there any immediate impact to training or anything, any certification or any issues with the fire department?
Well, we've just had the fire certification accreditation folks in town, and they understand where we are, but they're still recommending accreditation.
We still haven't started any negotiation as far as college being involved.
No, have not, not made that contact yet. We'll be giving you updates on that. The purchase of the CD lots over a three-year period from Stormwater, I'm recommending that to you. The part-time employee fleet, I'm not. The mini tractor propane and landscaping, I am, because of the three Es. The additional employee in rec, I'm not. The amphitheater event, I'm not. The winter fest decor, I'm not. The drone, I am, because it's funded by all funds. The six additional police officers, no. The learning management system, no. The traffic tech, yes, because we've already signed contracts, will help bring in money to pay for that. And then the cybersecurity engineer, no. And then the boardwalk, yes. So let's go back to the beginning and see. You tell me, because Gail would really like to begin to finalize some of these things. Not gonna hurt our feelings one way or the other, would you mind taking some, some non-binding votes that we hope will be binding? That, let's take it from the top. How do you feel about the advanced EMT?
Mike?
I'm still confused about that. While it's a great, any education is good education. But is that necessary when you have EMS responding to a typical situation? We're first responders and we've been pretty effective with that. I'm not saying no, I'm just, I think Randy and I have had some conversations about it. Probably a little bit more info on why we believe that that's an essential point.
You know, my feeling is, this could easily, in five or six years, be 10 times that number.
We could see it increasing year after year. Is that something that we?
We've got, it was so much to take in with the presentation. You're talking about 45, you had to have 45 people. What if you had 40? What if you had 50? You had 200 hours per person, times 45 people, that's 9,000 hours this year that they're gonna spend on it. And again, it is, it is a redundant activity, right? I mean, it's just, it's a duplication of services.
It's not.
It is not?
They're first on the scene, what, 90% of the time?
Right, but I mean, okay, so that's eventually, eventually.
It could be a matter of life and death.
Well, are we?
Because not all EMS that arrive on the scenes are fully fledged paramedics. This is a fully fledged paramedic, so case in point. You may have an EMS that arrives on the scene and that person cannot start an IV to give cardiac drugs if you have to do CPR with cardiac defibrillation and cardiac drugs. So your advanced personnel, your EMT, would be able to administer those medications under the supervision of your medical director.
Again, that just leads me to more questions of, you're talking about applying these procedures, these procedures for which we are not reimbursed. I mean, this is free medical care that the city is providing. So are we ready? These procedures are all gonna take items, they're not running around with IV bags, needles, drugs, those kind of things. There are just so many questions for, you know, that aren't answered for the benefit of a timeframe.
I guess we believe that the cost is a lot more than what we're seeing today to implement this sort of full-service EMT qualified persons on these units.
I'd agree with you.
Mayor, I mean, would you?
Do you all do any sort of model based on some of the events we've had in the past? If we would have been able to provide those services, how many lives possibly could have been saved?
I actually don't know the answer to that, but I'll be very happy to get more.
Maybe this is something we should defer to a later year until we do have some more information that we can, you know, look at and determine whether or not is the best road for us to go down. You know, it's like you mentioned, you know, what's next, you know, as far as, you know, how this is gonna proceed. Are we gonna start doing surgery at the scenes?
Is it our role?
Is it our role? All right, and it is, it is free medical care. I mean, you, you wanna know true demand, you put free on it. It can overwhelm you.
Well, I've always said, if you wanna know true demand, you put a price on it.
And the other thing is too, the county owes our citizens, you know, that level of service. I mean, our citizens in Jacksonville are paying county taxes to get proper EMS attention. So I think the burden's on them to step the game up a little bit if that game is not at the right level.
Critic quote is, but we had the same arguments when we let the fire department start to respond, be first responders. There was a whole issue about that. We're gonna take a half a million dollar fire truck and let the firemen drive to?
Turn it into an ambulance.
Turn it into an ambulance.
That's what's happened.
Pardon? We always save a lot of lives.
The smaller vehicles.
I'm not discarding that, but what, you know, I've always had the problem, and I think that's why we've implemented some of these other vehicles, is that we were using fire trucks to respond to.
But we had no other choice.
And I'm not against the idea, I just, I would just like to have more information, I want it to be studied more. And I don't know if you can do it in this year, this budget year.
Well, we would not, I'll be quite frank with you, to give you the level of information and comfort that I think that, what I'm hearing from the discussion, this is something then that we will continue to study. If someone wants to give us a, you know, once again, we're looking for Jell-O votes, because we do have to get this budget to bed.
I make a motion to defer this and have future workshops with more.
For next year.
Yeah. We need more information and more discussion.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor? Is that everybody didn't see? I need to see hands, I think. All in favor, raise your hand.
Okay. Active shooter vest?
Don't send them in while there's lead flying, that's my way of looking at that.
So you're comfortable that won't be in the budget? The extrication equipment, roughly $27,000, that will equip a second piece of equipment. Good for that. The training grounds are off the table, so that's a zero. The purchase of the stormwater lots, that'll be using stormwater fund. I'm sorry, the purchase of the community development lots, that will be using stormwater funds.
Everybody okay with that?
Yes, yes.
And if they change the maps, can the stormwater fund sell them at a later date?
If you can sell, if you can sell a lot at that one foot elevation.
Are we doing this because we have to?
Because of the maps.
Have to reimburse CBDG, is that, is that correct, we have to?
We do not have to. In fairness, though, community development bought those with the assumption they were gonna be building houses.
Yeah, but it's, you know, they're not, they're not, they're not a, well, we're just, we're just moving money from one side of our house to the other side of the house, right?
Well, you are, but I don't think that's what, I really don't think that's what you're doing. I think what you're doing, the community development block grant money was intended to do something for housing and low-income families. The stormwater fund.
And they bought them in good faith, and it didn't work out. You know, hey, private industry makes investments all the time that don't work out, and you just, you just deal with it.
I think that's going against the philosophy of the program. For low-income, we're putting that money in, what, taking it out of the general fund?
No, it comes out of the stormwater fund.
I mean, out of the stormwater fund, yeah.
And but what it will do is, over the next, if you do this over the next several years, it will actually put back into CD whatever it is. years, it will actually put back into CD whatever it is, let's say $130,000, that they can actually help people with housing. You know, but it's your decision.
I'm not against that at all.
Let's vote on that one, since there's been conversation about it. Oh, does somebody want to make a motion on that one?
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead. I make a motion, we accept the manager's recommendation.
Second.
Discussion, any further? All in favor, raise your hand.
No on the Fleet part-time employee. Everybody good there? The things for the mini tractor propane tank and landscape rocks as part of your three Es?
Let's go ahead and make that a combo here.
I move we accept all the manager's recommendations.
So, we're talking about the mini tractor?
I'm talking about the whole shebang.
Well, we didn't accept.
Except the first one.
We voted on the other one. I said we.
Oh, okay. Other than what's been voted.
All that's remaining.
Everything that's on this page, you're comfortable with?
Yes.
I'm good.
Everybody.
Everything on this page, you're comfortable with?
Yes. I am.
Okay. Here are the things that are still to be determined. Compensation issues, street paving, water and sewer rates, and eventually, the tax rates. Now, one thing that we are currently analyzing, you probably saw Monday's paper, the chairman of the County Commission mentioned the fact that they may be looking at a tax increase. It doesn't mean they actually are. But I would remind you that in the current distribution formula for sales tax, property rate, your tax rate is a factor. So, if the county does go up on their property taxes, or if Swansboro goes up significantly, it will have a negative impact on the amount of sales tax we get. We are still trying to do those calculations, but it's almost like trying to find the handle on a basketball right now. It's just, it's difficult until we actually have some final decisions from some of the others, other governmental agencies.
Well, they might have to use that million dollars we have set aside then that we were able to save.
I saw the article that there's shortfall of about $7 million in tax revenue, property tax.
Delinquencies.
Delinquencies, is that correct?
That's not, that has gone uncollected.
Do you want to analyze what percentage of that was actually, was city, how much of that was coming out of the city?
I've been waiting to get it.
Okay, I'm just curious. You know, I was wondering if it was all out in the county, which the odds are no, but how much was, how much was in the city? I'm just curious.
Question I had, and I haven't got an answer yet, is that any different than past years?
That's a good question, too. I thought it was because of the, they made a big deal about it to the paper. It may just been that as Jack Bright, as chairman, felt like it was important. Maybe past chairmans didn't feel it was important.
I think the conversation that Richard and I had with Jack, with Commissioner Bright and David Cotton was, at the time, they had a big deficiency as far as non-payment, but I think the collections kind of, it started kicking into gear. So, I don't know what it's at now, since that report came out.
They have, according to the meeting the mayor and I had with Chairman Bright and David Cotton roughly two weeks ago, they said that they have sent out letters to all folks who are delinquent. And in that letter, they've made the comment that if you're delinquent, pick a number, $100. If you don't pay it, you're actually going to pay $1,300, because the collection agency that is working on this is paid $1,200 per delinquent bill, regardless of whether that's a $30 bill or a $5,000 bill. And he said that with, Mr. Bright said that with that, a lot of people are coming in the door to avoid having to pay that $1,200 collection charge. So.
So, hopefully, they'll raise their collection rate quite a bit with a stern incentive that they've given.
Police compensation, what is there to be determined on that yet?
Well, in the, in the information from last, let me start that differently. In the budget notes from last week, you are aware, we still haven't gotten those out to you. Usually, we're able to get those back in three or four days to you. But because of the level of analysis, we are still trying to get that data. You had asked us to put together a hybrid general program for employee wages. All of those things, we are still working on. And in police compensation, you know, we have shown you the data on the scales and what it would cost. So, you know, whenever you're ready to work on that one, I think we've answered most of your questions on that. It's just in the general compensation of creating the hybrid and then providing some background information.
Really, the most important number is that tax rate.
Their tax rate.
Their tax rate. Before we can really finish up our.
Yes. Well, it all comes down to this. Everything on that page, well, let me do it differently. The general fund things on that page, you've obviously handled health insurance, and that added $155,000 that were taken out of fund balance. Police compensation, if you're going to do that, comes out of fund balance. Other employee compensation, if you're going to do that, it comes out of all the funds, including the general fund balance. So, there comes a point where you have to get comfortable as to how much money are you going to use in your fund balance to do any of these things or all of these things. One of the documents, or one of the notes, it's actually Budget Note 35, that hopefully, you'll be receiving in the next day, Gail has already submitted to me over the last five years, how much did you say the fund balance was going to be used to balance the budget? How much did you actually use? That's going to give you a yardstick as to how comfortable you should get on moving that from roughly $855,000 of fund balance to balance your budget up to some higher number. Now, we do know, and you've seen what's been happening at the gas pumps, we are still very much in the black, but not nearly as much as we were, because we have continued, I think very wisely, the policy that y'all agreed to five years or so ago, that we were going to keep gas and diesel at the highest number that we paid. That has helped build your fund balance, and it will again this year. But.
Historically, the reason we, fund balance has always grown more than what we anticipated it being, is because we followed a very conservative track in terms of estimating sales tax, power bill, other revenues. Do we still use that conservative realm in this budget?
I feel like, yes, sir.
I mean, we always stayed under the state recommendations.
Right. I'm a little bit nervous about what's in the budget right now for property tax, based on what we know. And the sales tax, I really haven't gotten enough into that detail analysis. And every single entity changing its percentage changes that sales tax. So, I don't know whether that's conservative or not, perfectly honest.
But you use something for a base.
Yes.
But I will say to you, just, and I want Gail to answer that first, we haven't changed any of our philosophies towards budgeting revenues or expenditures. We try to stay extremely conservative. But again, the problem, I said to John this morning, for such an easy budget, this is the most difficult budget we've put together. And the reason why it's been tough is because every other organization, what they do is going to have a direct impact on sales tax. And you know how bad it was four years ago when we had the less issue on sales tax. So.
And one of the successes that you've had, I mean, and the mayor just pointed it out, is over the budget years, you've had vacant positions that you haven't filled, that you've restructured the organization, and that's brought substantial savings over.
Over $500,000 in savings through reorganizations. So.
Decisions throughout the years from your team, you know, throughout the year from your team, and not having expenditures that aren't needed has saved money in the end and not utilized that complete fund balance requirement. So.
Those are all the items for tonight. We appreciate the guidance you've given. Remember, please, we will get these charts out on the rates to you in tomorrow's mail. Please get your thoughts back to us. We will share them, because remember the rule, you don't share with each other, you send it to us, the attorney or the clerk or myself, we then send it back out to everybody. And then, we'll look forward to June the 5th, where at that point, hopefully, we'll know more on the sales tax, and hopefully, we'll be setting ourselves to a position where we're going to be able to adopt it at some point. I don't think you're looking at adoption, though, until much later than, much later in June than normal. Thank you for your courtesy.
Thank you. Unless anyone has anything else, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.